We'll get started here. Want to welcome everybody to the November 3rd, 2022 Murray City Planning Commission. It is 6:30 PM and we'll commence the meeting. Want to introduce the Commissioners for President. We have Travis Nate to my far left, Lisa Mokavich, Jake Pearson, and then we have Michael Richards to my far right. Want to welcome everyone who's taken the time to come today. For those that are here and those that aren't, we will just remind those to that if they have a cellphone to please silent, if they get a phone call, to please take it out in the hall. Otherwise, play it on silent. Going to go through our agenda really quickly. We are first, the first business items are approval of minutes. They disclose any conflicts of interest and the approval of finding facts. From then, we have two conditional use permits to review. One for Triangle Auto Sales and the other for Gold Star Auto Sales. Then we'll be doing some training about the Open Public Meetings Act and then a discussion item concerning Section 17.56. Do you want to let everyone know the meeting is being recorded and all comments are on record? For the public, the public has been made aware of this agenda and those and those that are immediately affected by any of these items. These business items have received correspondence. If there's any public record, any public comment will read it that was received electronically before the meeting. We will, it will have been noted. We will have public comment during each of the business items. During that time, we'll just ask anyone who wants to speak about the business item to come to the podium and speak into the speak to the microphone, limit their time to about three minutes. So with that, I think we can get started. We will, our first item of business is the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting that was held on Thursday, October 6th. Have all the Commissioners had the opportunity to review these minutes?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any changes or adjustments to these minutes? Okay, I will accept a motion in that case.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the October 6th, 2022 minutes as submitted.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Nate to approve the October 6th minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The second by Commissioner Richards, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. Moving forward, we have the findings of fact. My apologies, moving forward. Do any Commissioners have any conflicts of interest with any of the agenda items today?
No.
Neither do I. Very good. Moving forward, we have the findings of facts for Kimball Investments Office Building. This was a conditional use permit. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the, to review these findings of fact?
Yes.
Are there any changes? All right, in that case, we can, we can accept a motion to, we can accept a motion in this case.
Chair Lowery, I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of facts for the Kimball Investments Office Building.
Great. So we have, we have a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the finding of facts for Kimball Investments Office Building. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so Mr. Richardson, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say aye. Okay, that has passed. I want to welcome Commissioner Patterson as well. Welcome. All right, at this point, we'll move on to our first conditional use permit review for Triangle Auto Sales. And Susan, I believe you're presenting.
Yes, thank you. This is a conditional use for auto sales at Triangle Auto, 4193 South 500 West, Unit 3, which is in the industrial warehouse complex, just over five acres. It's also in our MG zone. The property is just on the east side of 500 West. Probably very familiar with the property. Auto sales are a conditional use in all zones and so the applicant would like to have auto sales in Unit Number 3. And any mechanical repair will be done offsite. These, all these warehouse units are typical 900 square feet and have overhead door and mandor and all the, and it's very small office and small restroom area. So we calculate the parking based on the warehouse and office, which totals two parking stalls are required. They have shown on their site plan, two parking stalls. You cannot park in front of an overhead door, but they should have enough room to have two stalls. Here's just a couple of photos of the Unit 3 and then the actual, on the left and one on the right is the private drive that comes in from 500 West into the development. That's striped red for no parking. While I was there a week or so ago, there should be an ADA parking stall near adjacent Unit Number 2 and a few years ago, we approved a use that did require an ADA stall to be striped. But that is no longer there, so I did make it one of the conditions that an ADA stall be striped within close proximity of this unit. Because the most, the closest one is probably a couple hundred yards away down at the other end. So staff is recommending, oh, I said, we sent out notices to the surrounding property owners and did not receive any input. And staff is recommending approval of the conditional use based on the nine conditions as outlined.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any questions for Susan?
I have a question. Does our statute or code state what proximity to the facility means for an ADA parking stall?
It just says as closest to the main entrance as possible. And that's actually federal.
It's federal.
So we just have adopted those codes, but yeah, it just says as closest to the main entrance as possible. But for these, typically for this complex, we've, you know, had needed one for every few units.
I support ADA parking stalls and I want us to have them. Is there, has the owner said anything to the nature that is the closest I can get it to this facility? Is there any barriers in which it couldn't be placed closer?
I think what, in the previous application in 2018, it was right next to, actually it was right in Unit 2, which is right adjacent to this. And that, they could restripe that, there is available room for an ADA stall. So I think that's about as close as we're going to get.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see the applicant with their present, is that correct?
That's correct, and they did receive an email copy of their staff recommendation and also a mailed paper copy, both to the applicant and the property owner. So I think, not sure why they're not here.
Okay. Well, I think at this point, we can open for, if there's any more questions for Susan, we can open for any public comment. Have we received any, did we receive any comments from the mailer or electronically during this, the time here?
Can I ask?
Yeah, please.
Susan, another question while we're waiting or is that out of order?
I think it's fine.
Can you talk to us about the integrity of the parking lot?
The parking lot is in disrepair. It has, you know, it's uneven in a lot of places and kind of broken up and they're you know, there's double parked vehicles here and there. So it could be, it could use some improvement.
Jared, have we received any public comments? Not seen any here, I think we could safely close public comment and just open up to any questions you have.
Mr. Chair, so at what point is it appropriate for us to address status of the parking lot? I mean, it sounds like it needs to be repaired. It looked disrepair. Is this applicant too small of a proportion of the property to enforce anything like that or is it?
Well, the enforcement, code enforcement officer, zoning enforcement officer, in order for him to grant the business license, and that's usually how we find out about these, is they come in to apply for business license. And then we get to give them the good news that they have to go through a conditional use approval process. So they, he will not sign off on the business license till the conditions are done. So they will have to stripe one somewhere, either the property owner or the applicant one way or the other.
Or resurface even. And then at what point do we, if we ask them to resurface, are we, if that becomes part of our discussion? Are we only discussing resurfacing the parking spots that apply to this unit? Or how does that work with a property?
That's a good question, because usually we can only impose conditions that apply specifically to that space that the applicant is applying for. We have, I know we've tried to work with the property owner on this for several years.
So because we haven't tried to work, and someone else might have been, but since we haven't tried to work on it, maybe we should start doing two spots at a time? You have to resurface these three spots, these two spots?
What city, is there a city code that requires them to maintain a blacktop surface in the parking lot?
There is a code that says they have to maintain on a hard surface and adequate parking for their, I don't know exactly, I can't remember exactly the words, for their employees and operations, more or less. So it doesn't say it has to be, you know, pristine or completely smooth or whatever. It just says it has to be paved hard surface. That's the magic question, yeah.
How bad is it? If we're impassable, then we can say we're mitigating that by requiring that.
Jared, you probably ought to come up.
We can probably talk about this on the last item, because this is, this is one of those cases where we, we had come up with a potential plan to try to entice the owners of properties like this to to make improvements to the property as opposed to fighting us on every single use. One of the things we worked out with them years ago was we, we didn't want to start asking for, we didn't want to ask for an ADA stall on every single use, because everybody has two parking stalls in front of their units. So an ADA stall in every single unit was, every other stall in this whole complex is an ADA stall. So you can't really, there are things that we can't really apply very well to these individual conditional uses. But we may have an opportunity to talk to the owners of these properties about upkeep and things by offering them something in return. Something to make their lives easier for applications, for example, then we can say, look, we'll, we'll go to this method where all of your people don't have to go through this process. And in return, in the next two years, you're going to repave both of these deals or something like that. So, yeah. But that's the kind of thing we're at, is with, with conditions to repave, we'd need either to do just the ones in front of that unit, and we'd have to be showing that they weren't really usable anymore at that point. So it's, it's rough. Restriping is one thing, repaving is a whole other deal.
I don't feel like we've got a good solution, but I wish, because I agree, if we ask them to do two spots at a time, we're going to have a patchwork and it's going to be silly. Especially if it's a ridiculous request, I would make it silly. I do this asphalt, this cement to prove my point, right? If it's a ridiculous request, perceived as a ridiculous request. But we should have something placed.
Any other comments or thoughts on this, on this application? I do, I'm, I'll just, I'll go out of courtesy saying I'm disappointed that the applicant didn't, didn't come. I think that, you know, this is a, this is, this is not an administrative process where that's, that's rubber stamped. And I think the applicants ought to come and, and represent themselves and, and indicate that they're willing to maintain their, to maintain the property and follow the, follow the conditions we have. And as such, I, I, I don't feel that I would support until the applicant would come, frankly. And do that.
Hasn't Mr. Kareem been with us many times?
To my knowledge, no, he has not.
I thought we approved a Kareem Auto Sales and?
Oh, we did, that was a different one, that was K-A-R-I-M, different, different person, yeah, sorry. Similar, but different.
What is the precedent for when somebody doesn't show up?
That is up to the Commission whether you want to take action on the application or not. That's your prerogative.
I have to say, I, my feelings, I agree with the Chair, but I feel like in the past when people haven't showed up, we've approved items and we question whether we should approve them if there's a lot of questions in the conditions or the circumstances around the items. And I'm not sure we have that sense of questions tonight.
These are pretty standard conditions for this type of application.
I think I agree. I think if we had specific questions we needed the applicant to answer for us, then I think that would be a reason to not approve this tonight. But if we don't have such questions, I don't think them standing up and saying that they read the the conditions and they're going to abide by them is any different than us handing them the conditions that we're not going to give them the, you know, the permit until they abide by it.
I mean, the difference is that we can't have the conversation about the appearance of your property.
That's true.
And be cordial with each other and say we'd like to see improvements and see what can you do. But otherwise, I agree.
No, I, I agree though, I agree with what you're saying, I would rather have them here.
But in this scenario, it's, it's a project and not the property owner. And so I think those conversations are more appropriate for the property owner. I mean, they're on the record, but.
I respect, I respect your opinions, just, I have a different opinion, but.
I just, I'd see both. I mean, do we make a statement by saying no and, you know, the precedent needs to be that they be here? Does that carry any weight?
Well, only for this application, because nobody else applying in the future is going to know that we made a stand here.
And if there's no more discussion, we can entertain, happy to entertain a motion if there is one.
I was just going to say, my only thought was that I think it's unfair to hold this applicant responsible for their property owners. You know, like to not even move forward with the recommendation. We've, this has been an issue for a long time with this property. So, and we've approved in the past lots of other applications at this property as well, so.
Just for the record, my concern isn't necessarily a property. I think if someone makes an application and then, and they're requested to appear, they ought to. So that's, that's really where I'm coming from. But like I said, I respect all opinions and they're all valid.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit and allow the operation of the auto sales business on the property located at 4195 South 500 West, Unit Number 3, subject to the nine conditions.
Very well, we have a, we have a motion made by Commissioner Patterson that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto sales business on the property located at 4195 South 500 West, Unit 3, subject to the following nine conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So it's second by Commissioner Nate. Susan, will you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nate?
Yes.
Commissioner Mokavich?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
And Chair Lowery?
No. Okay, the motion has passed and we'll move on to, and we'll move on to item number five, which is Gold Star Auto Sales, and Susan, you're presenting that as well.
Yes. Here we are, back at the same property, 4195 South 500 West. This is Unit Number 36, which is on the backside of the building we just looked at. So south side of the same building. Again, it's for auto sales and and this applicant is going to do the auto sales plus the mechanical in, or auto repair in this unit. So all of the, the auto sales and the mechanical repair will have to be done inside, because there's no, it's not allowed on the exterior. And again, they have, are required two minimum parking spaces, and they are showing two spaces. Or there is available space of two. Here's a couple of photos of that side of the building for Unit Number 36. And there is two spaces, basically. He will have, he will be confined to have the sales and the repair inside. And this one, there is an ADA parking stall just across the aisle. So there is one as close really as you can possibly get it in, at Unit 44, so just 50 feet away. So this one's a little different as far as that goes. So staff is recommending approval for this one based on eight conditions as outlined.
Thank you, Susan. Are there any questions for Susan?
Those two spaces, those two tiny spaces? Is that, those are the two, it looks like.
Yeah, the parking stall should be nine by 18, that's the dimensions of them. I would have to verify the size of these, but that's what they should be.
It's the angle of the picture.
They sell Mini Coopers.
Ms. Nixon?
Didn't get, again, I didn't get any input, or we did send notices also to this one, did not receive any input. The applicant was sent an email with the staff report and also a paper copy, both in regular postal mail and email, and we're aware of the hearing.
DLR, it's a dealer license number that's on the sign, correct? They still need a business license.
They still need a business license, yes. It looks like they've got their sign up already, yes. I think it looks like a temporary sign though, so that typically wouldn't require a permit. But any permanent signage would require a sign permit approval and review for it. So that's also one of the conditions that any attached signage, we have a building permit for it.
Okay. Any other questions for Susan? I think we can open for public comment. Jared, did we receive any via, via email and Susan, were there any that were sent in previously?
We did not receive any comments.
Okay, and seeing no comment, I think we can, we can safely close the public comment section as well. Is there any discussion amongst the Commission? I don't want to beat a dead horse, so we'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit, permit to allow the operation of an auto sales business on the property located at 4195 South 500 West, Unit Number 36, subject to the following eight conditions.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Richards, that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto sales business on the property located at 4195 South 500 West, Unit 36, subject to the eight conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's second by Commissioner Pearson. Susan, would you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Nate?
Yes.
Ms. Mokavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
And Chair Lowery?
No. Okay, very good, the motion has passed and we welcome both these businesses to Murray and wish them success. At this point, we're going to move on to our training, which is item number six, Open Public Meetings Act.
Is, you sure Zach's not here? Is this his slide?
Who's slide?
Zach or you put that slide together or it's cute?
So this is obviously not one of Zach's, because it's not streamlined and iconography and really, really professional looking. Well, thank you, it's nice to be here. We've, this is the annual required training on the Open and Public Meetings Act. The requirement simply is to, for each public body, for you to receive this training annually. Just like me, you can read the law and it's, this one is, is pretty plain and simple. I think we've, in the past, we've provided the actual law to you before. You'll notice in any law that you read, it won't address every possible situation. It's not going to spell everything out for you. So the law expects essentially that you be adults and govern yourselves in accordance with the law or the principles of the law. And this law in particular has the intent listed for you. Here comes the public policy. So the legislature essentially looks at each public entity and under public entity, those are the political subdivisions, which include all of its councils, boards, commissions, as being involved in doing the public's business. And so the intent is that each agency, each board, each commission needs to take their actions open, openly and conduct their deliberations openly. And I somehow got all these little graphics and I didn't know how to get rid of them. Just to show how technologically savvy I am, playing around with PowerPoint and anyway, there's a couple of those where I will have to wait while it does its little dance. So again, the Open and Public Meetings Act wants us to, to take all of the actions openly, all the deliberations openly. Specifically, it, it requires that there is notice given so that people know when and where these public meetings are taking place and also what is going to be talked about. It requires that records be made, so that's why it's being recorded. It will be transcribed into minutes. There are deadlines as to when those are to be posted. And it requires process and participation. And what that looks like is an opportunity to view the meeting, if it's a public meeting, if it's a public hearing, an opportunity to participate. We've defaulted towards We've defaulted towards public hearings on most, most things and I think that's a good thing. Let's, people express what they feel about different projects or zone changes or issues that are going on before this board and others. Who's subject to the law? Everyone here. Again, it's, it's pretty much any public body, so boards, commissions, anything that is set up by the city that uses city resources or funds and makes decisions based on makes decisions or recommendations on the public's business. And so that's one reason that even the the Arts Advisory Board, the Recreation of Parks and Rec Advisory Board, they get the Open and Public Meetings Training Act, or training because they're considered a public body subject to that, so all of their meetings have to be open, they have to have minutes, all, all the same stuff. And a little iPad timed out, so I'm not sure.
Is it plugged in?
While we do this, Brian will hum Muzak for you.
That's more Americana. I don't know how this in translation, no, it the graphic kind of got.
I can show you how to do that and how to, how to change your, your animations.
I emailed them and I think it kind of it's covering, but it's, you, you kind of already know what, I've mentioned this, hit on it a couple of times, so the part that it's covering is that a meeting involves meeting to discuss or make a decision about the public's business. And as you all know, already a meeting is the convening of a public body with a quorum more than, than half of the members. And that applies whether it's a formal planning commission meeting, whether it's a work meeting. I don't think this has been done in many, many years, but site visits of a board or, or commission. All those would be subject to the Open and Public Meetings Act because those, those are considered the meetings.
Wow, so that is tough. I know there's some other cities that have their planning commission, you know, come thirty minutes early, then they drive around and see the two items they're going to talk about. If you did that, you'd have to record the discussion that occurs while you're traveling or take minutes in the car. We don't do it, so it's okay.
Not sure. So here maybe goes to your question, what is not a meeting? A chance meeting, seeing each other on the street or at the grocery store. A social meeting, so there was a dinner last night, I understand, that the mayor put on for volunteers and also for boards and commissioners and that isn't subject to the act because you shouldn't be deliberating, shouldn't be discussing business, making decisions, it's a, it's a social, social meeting. An email or text, so long as no decisions or deliberations are being made. And maybe this is a good point to bring up the email that we, we had going around last week and we were, we were concerned about this because it is a matter coming before the planning commission to make a decision, even though it's simply on for discussion, but it's hidden from the public's view when there's a, an email chain amongst all the planning commissioners to discuss to discuss a matter of business on procedure, essentially a decision that could come before the board, before the commission. All of that needs to be done in the public view. And so what I've asked Susan to do is to add that email thread to the packet so that it's in the public record, so that the public knows, these were some of the opinions that were put out on this issue. It has been noticed and it's going to be discussed as the next agenda item. You'll have a chance to, to talk about it then and it's my understanding, it's, it's not up for a decision, but to get input to the, to the planning department. But it's, it's an easy, it's an easy thing to to happen. I mean, it's, so I wouldn't blame anybody for, for this happening, but it's, it's something like this is, is being discussed outside of the public view. What I was telling Susan was that if you're, if you're simply looking for feedback from the commissioners, you can do that. It shouldn't be a reply all, it should be blind copied so that you aren't getting each other's ideas or input so that there's not deliberations going on amongst the commission. That I would see much different than, you know, an email chain where everybody's on, on the email kind of making, you're having deliberations, you're kind of thinking about it outside of the public view. So that's, that's why I, we asked Susan to, to send out the email saying, okay, stop, we'll, we'll discuss it at the next meeting. And again, emails or texts between commissioners are perfectly fine, it's just that deliberating or making decisions outside of the public view that is, is where it gets contrary to the act. This was, this happens occasionally, but obviously under, when we were under the COVID emergency, we had electronic meetings. There is a, a procedure to have people attend electronically under the city ordinance, but it I know this year in the state legislature, there were some updates to the, to that provision in the law. Essentially, the notice still, still applies and the, the city has to have, either in a rule or an ordinance, the process for having that happen. I know it, it's specific for the city council. I meant to look and did not get to it today as to, to seeing if we had a specific ordinance on the, on the planning commission. I think it is covered under meetings, but that's something I'll I'll look into and, and get back to you. Not that, I'm hoping there's a big demand to, to meet electronically, but you know, meeting electronically, that, that would constitute a quorum if, if one person isn't there, but there are three others. And hence the meeting and, and then subject to all the provisions of the act. So I mentioned that there are some notice and recording requirements. Most of these are things that you don't need to worry about. I listed them in the handout, but these are mostly handled by, by city staff, Susan and Zach and Jared do a great job making sure that the minutes are done, making sure that the notices are out, that notices have been mailed to everybody that they should be. So we think they're, they're definitely rock stars down there doing all, all the work that they do. Even though it's not something that you type up or are the ones that, that provide, I just thought I'd mention what the agendas look like, they, they need to tell the public where, when, and the date of, of the, of the meeting. It also needs to include the agenda with reasonable specificity. Again, this is one of those things that the legislature has decided not to define. There's no court cases on it, so we kind of feel that reasonable specificity is something that would allow just your average citizen to understand what's going to be talked about. I think the agendas that we have for the planning commission do that great. I, I like that they they're broken into categories and these are the conditional uses and the projects, I think that's, that works. I know we've talked about this before, of the presiding officer can allow discussion amongst the, the commission on an item that isn't on the agenda if it's been raised by the public. So long as a decision isn't made. And I'll give one caveat to that and I have it in a, in a later slide. It can be considered a violation of due process if you start discussing or, or having the public discuss an application where the applicant is not present and has received no notice that that's going to be talked about. It's just kind of unfair, unfair to them to have a, a big discussion without their input or without their attendance and there's no notice. So that's the only caveat to that, but I know that doesn't happen a, a ton here and, and not often at the city council level. I know occasionally that has come up where the, the council has discussed something that came up during citizen comments. That's not agenda, but, but that's our right under the act.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
A citizen says something about something we want to talk about, so the chair decides, hey, we're going to talk about this. We can't make any, doing the action, we can't take a vote, but we could talk about it. It has to be raised by the public, so does that mean the commission cannot bring something up on her own? We have to have that on the agenda, is that correct?
Right.
So we can't talk about it, if the public brings it up, we could bring it into the discussion, otherwise it has to be on an agenda.
Right. Yep. But if we want to have a discussion item, we just, we simply need to ask for it to be put on the agenda, right? Exactly. Notice given. Yep, so long as it's on the agenda and you, you schedule that ahead of time and say, we'd, we'd like to discuss this, even if no decision is going to be made, if it's just to get a meeting of the minds or direction to the planning staff, that's, that's perfectly fine, as long as it's noticed ahead of time and put on the agenda. Right, sorry, I didn't.
So even if we've already sent, posted a packet online and everything that the public had access to, we could add an agenda later on, item to that meeting, okay? Yeah, yeah. Sure, okay, awesome. Sure.
So what happens when we all? No. What, what about in our, in the, our pre-meeting when we, we kind of re-review the, 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 basically the, the business items? Should those just be, should we, should we just contain that to exactly what's on the agenda, no additional topics whatsoever? Yes, okay. That's a strict reading of, of the, the law and that's what I would have to advise is, I'm sorry? As long as they're good ones. Joke session?
Yeah.
It's not going to say it on the record.
My, my job is to keep you as far away from the line as possible under a strict reading of the act. And so, yeah, a lot of hypotheticals I can't answer, simply because can't have that be construed as legal advice. You know, if you're, you're going towards the line, that's what this, this slide's for. So it, so it's, you're responsible to adhere with the act and so if you violate the So we, so we would be safer if we wanted to update twenty-four hours or more before the meeting to ask staff to put it on the, on the agenda, basically. On the agenda, so it gets posted and the public has notice, okay?
But then if we, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, but then if we're asking about a specific project, then wouldn't we have to then notify the applicant of said project to discuss it in that?
If, if you're asking for an update, I think what I was saying with the due process was more the public. If the public is, is asking questions and you're engaging in a discussion.
So we could say, hey, we want to know what's going on, on the project on the corner of fifty-fourth and Seventh West and we could throw that on the agenda and they can just update us what's going on.
The new city hall, something we've already voted on, we're not going to vote on, we're just wondering how it's going. Is that crossing a line or getting close to a line?
It's a very specific question, I'd have to look into it before I could give any answer. So.
Very lawyer answer.
So if you intentionally violate the act or you intentionally abet or advise a violation of the act, especially the closed meeting portion, it is a class B misdemeanor which carries a fine, not exceeding a thousand dollars plus surcharges and confined to not more than six months in jail. Until recently, we haven't really seen too many prosecutions on Open and Public Meeting Act violations. Within the last few years, there have been some actions, just because there have been some fairly big violations.
How would you prove that I intentionally violated?
That is
Another question you can't answer.
Legal standard that you can, you can prove through the evidence of having done it and taken an affirmative action to, to do something to to close the meeting improperly or whatnot. So this, this provision is specifically on, on the closed meeting portions. And that usually, well, that has to take a, an affirmative action by a, a majority vote to close a meeting. And it's got to be closed for very specific reasons. And so by not doing that, a prosecutor could attempt to prove you intended to, because you took that action. That's kind of the, the brief answer that doesn't go into the full definition of intentionally.
I think our number one reason is to go to the bathroom. Really.
And the closed meeting isn't to, to take a recess, it's to discuss something out of the public view.
So that would be meaning asking people to leave or turning off the recording. And then turning it back on when we're done, we don't do that.
Right, that, there's, there's about five reasons that the law gives to close a meeting and I don't see any of those that the planning commission would take. Many of those are discussing the competency of, of an individual and it's not just like HR things. There have been meetings that they've tried to close, not here, but I've, I've written the news about hiring decisions or when the, the council gives their advice and consent and that's not a reason to close a meeting if you're actually looking at the competency or ability of a person at, at a higher level, then you can close. You can close if you're discussing the purchase of, of property for negotiation purposes. But before a contract is signed, you don't want the negotiation numbers to be out in the, in the public, which could torpedo whatever the city is doing at looking at land acquisition or sales. And so those are just a couple of the reasons that you can close a meeting. And none of those are things that the planning commission would, would be involved in. So another penalty that could, could come from a violation of the act if, if someone were to take a civil action and bring a claim as a, as a court may void whatever action was taken. And what that amounts to essentially is a lengthened out process because it would essentially come back to the, the body that took the action to redo it correctly, to, to notice everything correctly, to have the correct public hearing. And then you could still go ahead and do it. Although when you're working with, with developers or, or some others, that delay could torpedo their project or their application. And so it's, is important to try to make sure we're adhering to the act so that there aren't complaints, lawsuits, delays that could, could, could cause problems and, and cost people money. Which is also the other, the last one is that we could be ordered to pay court costs and attorney fees for violations, whether or not we can come back and cure a, a violation. And that's something that the city really doesn't like paying all that often, having to be subject to court costs and attorney's fees for the other, other parties. Luckily, we've never seen that happen in our city. And we hope not to. Okay. Again, there's some of the common violations, closing it improperly. Failing to notice it correctly or failing to, to list kind of reasonable specificity what's on the agenda, which is essentially what, what topics you're going to talk about. This one's the due process and then deliberating or making decisions outside of the public view is, is a common violation, which is something we try to Is is a common violation, which is something we try to. As as best as possible avoid, you know, we again. My office, we we advise to stay away as far away from the line as as we can get. Talked a little bit about prosecutors. Who can enforce the act, the county attorney. Someone can make a complaint to them. They can they can file an action. Attorney general of the state. And private citizens can file lawsuits. Although it is good to know that. When people come to the meetings and claim they did not have notice, they can't bring an action for not having noticed because they're at the meeting. So. Kind of defeats their their claim there. So. Think we can all. Do this. You got this? It's a. A few a few simple uh things to follow, but uh. It's doable, so. That is all that I have. I I I couldn't get a. A video clip to work, but you know.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate your time and effort doing this.
Welcome. If if there are specific questions or you have a situation come up. Uh, feel free to to come into my office or give me a call and and we're happy to talk to. You individually there.
Can I ask a few questions real quick?
You can ask, we can't guarantee.
Would it be would would this be possible? In our pre-meeting, what if we had an agenda item that we got general updates of past projects and just put it on the agenda? Would that be too general?
So. I think at this point, I'm not going to answer specific hypotheticals. I think hypotheticals are difficult. Because actual facts, like when there's a situation. It's a very fact dependent. And on this, I think it would be, even though it's not a a situation. Uh, questions that I've gotten in the past where. Hey, this guy talks to me at a party. Is that okay? I I still think it's something that it would be better to to look at outside of a a public meeting and and try to work out the answer rather than the answering on the spot.
Okay.
Would it be considered other business?
What do you all think?
Well, I I think I think we appreciate you. We don't want to put you in a tough spot. We appreciate that you've you've answered. We don't want to. You you don't want to answer this specific question at this point, so. It's obviously it's obviously a concern we have and and perhaps the research can be done and and we can know how we should best handle this.
I appreciate that because I don't want I don't want to be approaching a line. I want to know what the line is. And I and I, you know, I think we should talk about it at some other point, like you said, because I think if we're talking about an item that's already been. Litigate, we've already decided on. That we're not deliberating.
Like what happened at city council or something. It's more of an update of like what's happened.
Because we've already come to a conclusion that we're not deliberating on something that we're going to vote on.
Well, and and until we get until we we get definitive word from from your office, we'll make sure that we we follow we strictly follow the agenda, but we would like to. To have some instructions on this. Is that fair?
That's fair. Yep, thanks.
Can I ask two more questions? We might not be able I might not be able to ask these because I'm not sure it actually falls under this uh. Public meeting training, but. Has to do with conditional use permits. Can I ask those questions right now? Or would you rather me ask you later?
Rather we uh talk about that later, especially since it. Yeah, wasn't agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'm done.
Thanks for your time, Brian. We appreciate it. Okay, um, we're going to move on to a discussion, a discussion item. Number seven, which is a discussion on section seventeen dot fifty-six. Relating to the planning commission authorizing community development staff to administratively review conditional use permit applications. Susan, are you leading this discussion?
Uh, yeah, as soon as I figure out where we are here.
And 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 with and and with and with reasonable notice too.
Yes, thank you. Oh, yes, okay, so. This has been brought up in the past questions, actually, about it. So the item for discussion is the agenda that as. A discussion on section seventeen fifty-six relating to planning commission authorizing community development staff to administratively. Review conditional use permit application. In our code under seventeen fifty-six. It does specify, and I'm going to read it, um, under seventeen fifty-six oh three oh. A conditional use permit application shall be made to the community development department as provided in this title. The completed application shall be submitted to the planning commission at one of the regularly scheduled meetings. Planning commission may authorize members of the community development department to grant or deny conditional use permits. Subject to such limitations or qualifications as are deemed necessary. So. We as staff wanted to get your input if that is something you wanted to entertain, discuss, what have you. Um, couple of ideas about that in the following section. Seventeen fifty-six oh five oh. Um, we would not be holding a public hearing, obviously, if staff were to do it, so it kind of removes the public. Opportunity for input. Um, which we have done by practice forever. So it would remove that and possibly could be viewed as maybe not as transparent. But it also would streamline some of the longer meetings that may be redundant items. So just, I'm just throwing out some different options to think about to get your input if it's even something that you want to. Contemplate. So. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the specific codes of this section allowing that or. And again, this is not approving any making any decisions. It's just for input discussion.
Can I kick us off with a question? Commissioner Patterson. How many items have you heard for auto cells and construction businesses in Garko over the course of your tenure?
Um, I mean, they turn over so quickly, so.
Have we ever denied one?
Not that I know.
I can't think of one that we've denied. I can't think of one, well, uh, maybe there's one or two that we've added conditions.
Yeah, I was gonna say some of them that like, um, we've. Yeah, added conditions about like no repair, things like that.
But those are all conditions that staff could reasonably. Make. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's a totally fair statement.
Wouldn't have staff, though, come up with those already? They came up with the list and the commission came up with additional condition.
Well, and those are really specific. The ones that we did add things to, it was like. Very specific to that.
But that wouldn't have been done if staff just had done it.
I think the change is that those um things became part of the normal conditions moving forward.
But they're still, it wouldn't have been caught. I I don't know. I. Devil's advocate a little bit too. I think, yes. These keep coming to us from this specific area and yes, we don't deny them, but it gives us the opportunity to publicly talk about. What improvements need to be made so the public knows that we are trying to make some improvements, even when the statute really doesn't allow for us to. And it also opens up the floor for discussion and I don't think any of those discussions or items have. Worn on into the night. They've always been quick, turned over. They haven't. I don't feel like if it wasn't for those, my job would be easier.
So can I ask, this. Seems like it's saying we can do that for certain zones, like we could. Can we attach it to certain properties or would it have to be zone? Wide? Not not the actual code. But that the streamlining, the process. For redundant CPU applications. Or particular use, yeah.
Particular uses in certain.
In certain zones, yeah, so. Okay. Are allowed, like, could be processed by staff. Yes. Yeah. Yes, that's that's how I'm feeling. I'm feeling like obviously not all. Um, but I think very specific things I do feel comfortable making that a staff.
I'm I'm uh. Probably can guess. I I feel I feel differently. Um, I think it's a. I think it's I think it's a very, very, very healthy and positive um while time consuming for us um action. And probably one of the, you know, it 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 is, I mean, it's. Look, you know, Commissioners Nae and Patterson, I don't I don't disagree that I and I know you've been on the on the planning commission longer than I have, and I'm sure you've seen. Hundreds um of conditional use approval of conditional use applications, um, you know, maybe more. But I do think that there is an element of a positive socialization that these that these business owners get from coming. Making the application, taking the time out of their ti- out of their out of their day to come down and go through this process and I. I think that's part of what makes up, um, you know, frankly, not not to get a little bit too, you know, too on a on a. On a soapbox, but that's what makes up a democracy um in in or a republic and is. People having having the opportunity to come and 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 present their case. This is a use that is a it is a conditional use. It's not. It's not a use that's approved. Um, you know, they have the opportunity to come and 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 make their case to a group of citizens. And, you know, I'm looking at it um from the at from the aspect of it's it's very easy. For um, and I love you guys and I agree with this slide about the planning committee, the pla- the planning, the planning, um. The planning staff are superstars, but you know, it's it's very easy for.
Rock stars.
Rock stars, sorry, I apologize. Point of order. You're rock stars, not superstars. But um, you know, it's it's very easy for um not seeing what happened here, but it could could happen with with a bad egg. It's very easy for for somebody for for one person to have a a disparate impact on. On this and and I think that being having this being done in in the open is a positive thing. Uh, for 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 the applicant in the long run, um, it is time consuming for them. It is time consuming for us, but. I guess I kind of view it as a as a duty. So that's why that's 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 how I feel and um. And I'm, you know, I recognize it's not the most efficient use of 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 time, perhaps, but. It's not much of an efficient use, but perhaps it's very effective.
We're salaried, so it's just time. I think, you know, I'm open to, I want to streamline anything I can. Um, so I I'm in favor of streamlining something that if. We don't provide real meaningful input, then yeah, let's streamline it. Um, and it sounds like. The track record is that there hasn't been a ton of meaningful input for something like for Garko. And so I I'm of the opinion that, yeah, we do streamline where we can, but still respect the point of. You know, it's open and public debate for a certain thing.
I'm really, really torn. Because I see that it's redundant and I feel like every time with a certain property, we had the same response. And that for that reason, though, I almost think I lean toward keeping as something that we need to address publicly because. Protect our staff because I could, I feel like I the public could come along and say, why do you keep approving this? Why this is a mess? Are you in cahoots with them? You haven't done anything about their parking lot. You insisted I fix my parking lot, you know, so I feel like that's a good reason. To have it in a public meeting.
But wouldn't they be doing some of that?
There's our code doesn't, in this situation, our code doesn't have much.
It could become almost arbitrary if they did and again, that's a disparate treatment or impact that 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 it's staff, it it runs a risk of that. And, you know, I. Some of my favorite memories in in the couple of years I've been here, there've been, you know, it's it's been, and this maybe is a little bit cheesy. I apologize, but. You know, we've had some some applicants come in that are that, you know, maybe English isn't their first language. Maybe this is their first time ever doing this. And watching them go through this process and and seeing um the validation, frankly, that that they've that they've that they've that they've had. Has been some has honestly, I didn't expect this, but it's been one of the things I really enjoyed the most. Um, and so I I do think that there's a positive socialization and I don't I can't point to any kind of, you know, soci- soci- you know. Political or sociological study that 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 says that um other than just observation and and. I don't know, I I guess I'm that that's kind of where where I'm coming from is it seems like there's a lot of risk in 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 doing this and 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 at risk of disparate. Impact and treatment and and people saying just the point that that Lisa's making that that, you know, hey, you're treating me differently than someone else. It seems like we're putting more risk on the staff by doing that and I don't think this is overly burdensome.
We're making it a on a case by case. Thing where we make the decision which ones were that we wouldn't bring.
In in the open, in 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 the in 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 an open setting that's being recorded.
I don't think it would be case by case. I would think we'd say property X with this.
That's what I mean. So like this with Garko, we have a history with.
Right.
You know, a lot of people not showing up apparently. That would be one and then.
I see it differently. I see it as a barrier for them to actually being able to open their business. By having like if they don't have the language skills or things like that, they might not understand exactly what is required of them or expected of them. Whereas if they can meet these conditions and be get their business license. Um, without having to do that additional step and they're still complying with everything. At certain properties, I'm not saying citywide. I'm not, you know, I'm saying really specifically. Um, I see that as a an advantage to those applicants.
That really kind of worries me a little bit, though, because my approach to the what you're describing right now, like in my profession, other professions. Is we need to step up and provide translators. Not say you don't participate in the process.
But they would be they would be held to the same standard. They're meeting the same conditions. There's not a change of what they're actually required to do to be able to get this CUP.
Well, except submit. Application. We know it's going to rubber stamp because we've all said this process is laborious and we always approve it.
And as far as a public hearing, almost no one comes for that, like they. They don't get a lot of public comment on those kind of property of these kind of applications at very specific properties.
I want to. Commissioner Richard earlier was saying, you know, he didn't think we ever make a change of significance and I guess I wanted to say what how are we. Grading significance. I mean, is there there's soft impact and hard impact and even though we're not.
So I was referring to the fact that to to Commissioner Nae's comment about. Like, how many like additional um conditions did we do in all these years?
Well, and that's what I mean by software hard impact because I think sometimes our hands are tied. If the code says it's okay, it's okay. But the discussion about, I can't. Write a condition that they have to repay the parking lot even though it's a mess because then we get into the nuances of what is an A parking lot, what's an F parking lot? And what grade do we deny it, right? And we don't have that written in our code. But without getting, so we don't get in those nuances, we could have this discussion so the owner knows, ah, I should start looking at my parking lot. But they don't.
I think some property owners have no shame. I I I think some of them are in it purely for the money and they will use their properties until their property is no longer um. Viable in any way, shape or form. They've made their initial investment. They're going to reap every penny they can get for time and all eternity.
I I agree with you and 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 why make it easier on on them to do that?
I don't, but the property owners, again, they're not coming to these meetings and 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 going through the the process.
But we've had several, we've had, I remember uh, there was there was one on Ninth East and. It was in in where Sports Authority used to be in that in that in that project where the the landlord was going to have to plant additional trees, do different things. And they did come. And yeah, their representative did come. Um, and so, I mean, I think it I think it does force conversations and I think it it adds a a level of formality and. And uh, you know, I mean. I can tell you from from personal investments and from from my business life that, you know, responsible tenants and responsible landlords, when they. When they know they have it, when they know they have a non-conforming conditional use, they'll make they'll make a lease or an LLI contingent upon that. And they take it very seriously and and I I think that that by lowering the bar. You know, frankly, by lowering the bar, we I think we make it easier for for the folks that aren't going to take it seriously and and that's not necessarily. That's not necessarily a good thing, I don't think.
And the other thing I'd say is that, you know, these are conditional use permits, right? So by state law. They're allowed. We just have the ability to put additional mitigating factors in into the into the conditions. But again, I think if you narrow it down to very specific uses, you know, the the wedding uh place that you were talking about on Ninth East. You know, they still haven't done anything there. That property still hasn't been upgraded in any way, shape or form. That property still hasn't been upgraded in any way, shape, or form.
And is the wedding place in, in, is it the upper? Sorry, probably shouldn't be talking about it, I apologize. I, I, we, we can be taught, Brian, I apologize.
But I, I think that that type of use and that type of center that is well-maintained and taken care of is entirely different than the dilapidated property that's looking to have a 900-square-foot unit to sell two-
And they're the ones that actually showed up, right?
Because they're invested in it.
Right. And that's the hard part is that we, I do believe in using conditional use permits as a way to bring, um, lots of properties up to compliance, and we do that for all kinds of things.
So what?
I believe in that. I don't-
Why give it up then?
It has not worked yet. It has not worked yet. And this specific property. So why not make this, like, if we are going to narrow in and maybe use something as an incentive, like they said, you know, if you will do these things, we could make this easier.
Then let's hear the incentive.
Well, that's what they said, like, you maybe don't have to do as many ADA stalls if you will do this thing, you know what I mean?
Well, in, in this bar, we're talking about setting, would it run with the property? So if a property sold or is a different owner, it would still exist, or is it very specific to this owner?
Well, any change of use or things like that, yeah.
If we, that's a good question, especially for the properties we just talked about, um, because we've seen a lot of auto sales and contractors. So we check specifically for that unit. And if there's been auto sales at that unit, then they don't have to go through this process again.
Right, because they've already been-
And literally, they'll come down and shop the units with us to try to find-
And those ones are more likely to get, yeah.
But, um, one, a couple of things we could do, just throw this out, is you could, give a couple ideas, you could make some of the uses that are now conditional uses as permitted uses. We would handle them, wait, wait, staff-wise. You, for a specific property, that would have to be the zone-wise, right? No, like, uh, zone changes, like, say contractors in the MG zone. I mean, actually, that's something we thought, talked about for years. Um, making that a permitted use rather than a conditional use. I'm just giving you some options.
We could also throw out a geographical area and say from Trax, 45th South, 48th South, to I-15, that-
That would be a permitted use in that area.
Right, we could say that's a permitted use in that area? How would we do that?
That would, that would be a text amendment.
Yeah, would that, that, we could recommend it to the city council and they would-
Yeah, it would have to go through the full process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that not, doesn't that run by zone?
Like an overlay district?
Well, no, you would, you would make a text amendment to change, for instance, auto sales in the MG. For instance, you could make a text amendment to change that from a conditional use to be allowed as a permitted use. And then we, and permitted uses don't come to the planning commission.
As long as it's on, uh, four acres or larger?
Um, that, you could say that. I'm just saying it outright, it would be permitted, and we would handle it as staff. Um, another option is possibly making the fee maybe less for an administrative CUP. Uh, as I, you know, I'm just giving you some ideas. And also, if we did handle CUPs, if we did administratively, we still could have a public input period. So we send out notices and give two weeks or what have you, uh, for public input, that we could, you know, then compile a recommendation or an approval or something like that.
Can I ask a question?
So there are options we could do.
If someone comes in for a conditional use right now, um, how long does it take from that time until it gets in front of us?
We have a-
I mean, give me an idea.
Great question. We have a three-week deadline, so the, so the deadline for today's meeting was exactly three weeks ago, Thursday at 10:00 AM.
So if they put it in three weeks prior, it was on our agenda today?
At minimum, three weeks, yeah, that's cutting it right down to the wire.
Let's say we authorize you to approve these conditional use permits. How fast would you do them if they didn't have to come before the commission?
It would probably be about the same amount of time, because we would still, if they were a conditional use, we would still have to do noticing to adjacent property.
I don't have a strong opinion either way, but here's what I'm, here's my opinion. Our agenda is not super full, right? We don't have, we don't come here and have, you know, a thousand agenda items we have to do. And if it's not going to speed up the process, then I, I'm fine looking at these. I think the benefit we may get, even though it's small, if we're not speeding up a process, let's just continue doing it. That's my opinion.
Probably the only way to really speed up the process is to make them a permitted use rather than-
Yeah, and I think that's a, we could have a conversation.
So you don't have to notify. Yeah, the notification is what takes the time, right?
Yeah, because we have to give them a ten, they have to be notified 10 days before the meeting.
So what is the genesis of wanting to streamline this? Or is there like a general effort to streamline things? Um, are other cities doing things to streamline this, um, general procedures?
There, some cities do, do administratively, or they'll do a consent agenda. Um, we've never done either or, um, but we could research other cities to see what-
I'm just thinking like, you know, in, in my line of work, we're always talking about how we can streamline stuff. Um, and so sometimes it has a specific reason, sometimes it's just like, let's cut out waste. And so I'm wondering what other cities are doing to cut out waste and time and process? And, but maybe there's a specific reason why this-
Yeah, and me, and me, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to keep track of positives and negatives, right? The old Ben Franklin, you know, what's a positive, what's negative? Wha- what, what, what would be the positive, um, of doing this? It's, it's-
Of giving staff authority, is that what you mean?
Yeah, and, and we can ask this to, I mean, everyone's opinion is valuable with this. What, what, what are the positives, and we've, I mean, we've listed some negatives, but what are the positives?
Uh, positive is it would streamline the meetings, but they wouldn't be as long meetings.
It just saves time in general, right?
It saves us a lot of time too. The staff reports are, take hours. You know, I mean, we would still do some kind of an approval process.
Yeah, and that's like time, you know, uh, salary.
That takes a lot of hours. It really does take a lot of hours.
So we save, save time and potentially save, potentially save some money.
Sure, yeah. Um, that's-
How much time, I mean, give me an idea, how much time are we putting into each one of these conditional use compared to if we just had you do it internally?
Um, good question.
I mean, is it going to save 10 minutes, or is it going to save an hour?
The small, this, these small out hours, some of them are hours. I would say even days, some of them are complicated.
By just internally having a conditional use, we'd save hours, or is that a permitted use?
What, what?
We would save hours.
And why, and why is that?
Because we're familiar with the property, we don't have to do the background and, and type it all out like some morning.
But, 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 but you are, you're familiar with the property, but what, you know, what if, what if it's a new, a, a new, um, you know, a new, a newer staff member that hasn't, that hasn't been to the property?
But the process we're talking about now, we would be only with the property we're familiar with. We're considering saying this property, this topic.
Right, yeah.
Right, unless we change the direction, go to another discussion, another pro- process.
There is, there, so many great points, and I just want to give you one, one thing from, from my perspective to think about, because I'm not, I'm kind of on the fence about it. I see positives and I see negatives. And the one negative I see in it, in, in the idea of making it a conditional use, is that, and then it may not outweigh the positives, because the positives are pretty small. These don't take up a lot of space in our agendas, like, like Commissioner Pearson pointed out, we're not super full. They do start to get, they kind of grate on you to, to do these over and over and over, and, and not see a lot of benefit from them. But every once in a while, something comes out of the meetings that's beneficial. Um, I do, I, I know, I know our current staff, and I know we would not phone it in on, if these were administrative. Uh, we know the site and things, and Susan would still put in the time and work on these and talk to the, we'd still make the phone calls and ask them about their operations, et cetera. But it would be easy for staff, different staff that I've known through the years, to just kind of really write these off. Um, if they're not, the, the staff report every once in a while, producing that staff report makes you ask a question you wouldn't have asked yourself if you were just going straight to permit on it. And that can be good. It can, it can reveal some things. It doesn't happen all the time. It doesn't very happen, happen very often.
Do, do you feel there could almost be a lack of accountability in some cases?
Um, not, not for the staff that we have, no.
But in, in other jurisdictions?
I can't guarantee this staff is always going to be the staff. And once it's codified, it's codified. So that's, that's the one pause that I have on it.
I think we can for sure say that the staff will not be the staff in five, 10, 20 years, right? We, we will have turnover for sure.
What would you say about the-
I mean, there's always a possibility that I'm not going to be here next week.
One thing that we did change from, um, well, I guess the legislature changed from a conditional use to a permitted use were AUDs.
Yeah.
Um, wait, accessory, no, ADUs.
ADUs are a great example.
So do you feel like some of these concerns, um, have happened with that just being a permitted use now?
And see, I, I categorically, absolutely not. We're still reviewing the ADUs, going through all those steps, talking to the people, doing, putting in the legwork on it. So I don't, I don't want to say that, I'm not saying, that internally only, yeah, there's no-
I think there's a big difference.
No, the, the, this staff that we have is not going to not be accountable to the thing.
But even, I mean, any staffing, right? If it's a permitted use, they're still required to meet the standards to get their business license.
And we keep those records.
And it would be the same with a permitted use of the ADUs. They're still required to meet all of those standards. Just, it's checked off internally-
We, we put them through those-
As a permitted use, yeah, they, they still have to jump through all of the same hoops.
Yes, and I don't have any doubt that we wouldn't do the same thing, and we're still doing that. Seen those, I've seen those being processed, and we still put in the work. Not having to come to the public meeting is a benefit to some applicants that are bothered by it, and maybe it only adds four days to the process, but time is money and they hate it, and it's, the, the thing that we talked about years ago, um, with, with GARCO, with specificity to GARCO, was we couldn't get them, we never get, you know, the repaving of the site. It never gets really cleaned up very well. The landscaping is always kind of grubby. And we thought, what if we, what if we offered them, but they're always bothered by them, by they, I mean, the, the owners. They're always bothered by having to sign all these applications. They want to lease these properties out, and they always got to tell the people, you got to go talk to the planning department and make sure you're okay, et cetera, et cetera. It's just a hassle for them. And we thought if we could exchange that benefit of not having that hassle for our benefit of, try to ignore the quote, quote, because it, it would be all hammered out. Our benefit would be saying-
It's, it's public.
We're thinking about doing this, and if we wrote this into code, you know, you, you guys don't have to do this in your geographic area. You don't have to send people to us for those leases and, and go through that hassle. We still have to do permits on them, but we'll do them internally. It'll save you time, save you a little hassle, but you guys are going to repave your lots if you're willing to do this.
Well, I can, so, pro quo question, so two thoughts. One, you know, I usually agree with Maren on that. I, I respect your opinion, and I agree with a lot of it. I'm just for devil's advocate for discussion. The, she's, you know, she was saying that most, the, the things that you've been given authority to do without coming to us have all gone well, yes. But I think most of those topics were topics we all kind of agreed upon, didn't have concerns, and this is a hot topic that we have concerns.
I don't think that's true. People did not agree about ADUs. They were very contentious if they should be in allowed use or permitted.
All the time, there were people in here yelling.
And they wanted them to have the conditional use so that every single person could come in and have their public hearing and be able to speak.
It took quite a while to come up with the 13-second conditions.
It took the legislator to say everyone is allowed to do this.
Yeah.
As a permitted use.
So, um, I, I want to make a, I want to, I want to, I want to, I have, I have a question. Um, so there's an element that it feels like folks who have dealt with this property for quite a while are a little bit tired of it and don't want to deal with it, and we throw up our hands and saying, if we can, you know what, if we can get something out of you to make this marginally better, maybe, maybe we're willing to make it, maybe we're maybe going to make it, a, a, a deal. That's, 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 that's-
That's not what I'm saying.
That's what I'm hearing. But that's, 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 that's what-
That was staff.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm, that's, that's, so is there, in, there's an element that, that, there's an element, uh, the, the question, the question is this. Within the, within the conditional use process that we have, um, that we, that we currently have, you know, when we, we have it, when we have a, a, a property that is, that's, we're, we're talking about, uh, about, about, two that we're, that we're in there today. We have a property that it, you know, when it was built, I guess it met, it met all the codes, and it was, and it, it, you know, it's, it, it, it was, uh, it was approved and it was done the right way. It's clearly, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not, um, picking my words a little carefully here. It's, it's not the, uh, it's, it's, it's not the place that you, 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 when you're, when you're showing off your hometown, you don't necessarily drive past that, drive past, drive past that, if that makes sense. What, what can, what can we do within that conditional use with it, within that to, to address this and say, you know what? This just isn't up to the standards that we would like to see our community, frankly. Um, you know, what can, what, what if anything can we do? And maybe there's nothing we can do.
Well, well, picking back that question too, the bargain we're discussing potentially striking, is that something we could have in writing so we can hold them to it? Or is it just some discussion we're having?
I, I don't know. It never made it far, it only came up in my mind again because this, this came up. And I remember talking with people before I had.
Yeah, it was like four, five years.
Well, let's be clear, there are a lot of permitted uses.
Can I get my question answered first? What can we, what can we do? What can we do to make the conditional use, what can we do to, 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 to actually affect change with it? If anything?
The change that we've been talking about, like, like giving the property maintained better?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You'd have, yeah. We, we need a property maintenance code that was strongly worded, or something like that, that would have to happen.
And then have the enforcement tools to actually make sure that it gets enforced. We don't-
Which we don't have.
We do not have.
Really, the way it works best is the way it worked, for example, when you were talking about the, the property on Ninth East. So landscaping comes in and that they're not up to standards. We have very specific landscaping standards that's, that are easy to say, easy and clear, and we can enforce those because they are so clear. So we can say, you're going to have to do this, and we're going to check those boxes before you get your license, et cetera. It's harder with something like the condition of pavement. I just, I don't know how to do that. I imagine you could probably say, we want a certain standard for your pavement. But it would have to be written with the kind of specificity that the landscaping ordinance has. And I don't know how to write that for pavement. I don't know if it's possible.
Couldn't you do your strategy as like a trial? Let's see if it works, and if it doesn't, can we reverse what we, you know, that strategy?
It doesn't have to be forever, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think there's a couple of things going on. Landscaping, I think, is tricky. That Ninth East example is tricky because that property, I, have they got their business license? Because a lot of times when property owners find out what they have to do in their investment, they don't, they bail. So I, I think that that's not a totally comparable thing to this. But I also think that we have permitted uses that come and get permitted, approved in probably every zone, because every zone has permitted uses. We would be saying, we're making this specific, these specific things permitted uses in these specific places, which already exist in other zones across the city. This is, this would just be making it a specific permitted use in this specific place. So I, I don't, I don't think that, okay, here's my other question. And I'm sure that you guys don't know this off the top of your head, but I wonder how many CUPs for auto sales and contractor businesses are in GARCO? Like, right now?
Actually, that's funny. I did just look at that.
Yes, Susan.
Well, I don't know the exact number, because I actually did look at comparison, and there are quite a few. But it's kind of the revolving units.
Yes.
You know, so they get auto sales, then it's contract.
70%? Roughly, 60%, 70%, roughly?
The number, you, probably 50%, yeah. I, I will say this also, um, about a year ago, we did meet with property owners, um, which was actually instigated by the fire department, the fire marshal, um, to kind of, you know, they had some fire concerns. So we kind of had this meeting with a bunch of us. And they expressed to me their, um, they would get a little irritated every time a potential tenant came to them to say, you've got to sign this conditional use, and it's got to be notarized. And, you know, they were saying, here I go again, you know? To where he even called and said, Susan, you know me, you know the blah, blah, blah. Do I really have to notarize these every single time, blah, 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 blah?
Yes, it's a legal document.
So of course my, and he's like, isn't there a way we can make this easier, blah, 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 blah? They were actually in favor of, I, I guess I'm just saying, maybe that's something we could discuss with them if, if-
If all of their units had a conditional-
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to think of a way that, you know, maybe would benefit them, that we might say, how about if we pave it all of these? I, I don't know. I don't even know if we could do that, but they were-
Well, I think that we probably should, we should, 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 talk about, not, not talk about that for a, a bit, judging off Brian's facial expressions, but, but, um, but we, um, I mean, again, you know, what, the story that you're relating to me, I, I'm not inclined to make their life easier. This, I'm not, I'm not, this isn't, I'm, this is, this is a city government, this is, these are legal documents. Yes, you have to notarize documents that are going to be recorded. Yes, you, I mean, this is like, this is, this is the, this is the real world. this is the, this is the real world. Um, I'm sorry that it's a hassle, but you own property. These are the rules. Everyone else follows them. Follow the rules. Um, and I'm, I'm, you know, I, I just am not inclined to make, to, to, to make that, to, to, to somehow, in my view, lower a bar and make it easier for somebody who's struggling to, to, to do that. Um, that's, I don't think that's, I don't think that, I don't think you get a, get a result doing that, um, personally.
I'm going to play the other devil's advocate now for the other side. I'm not sure we're lowering.
Which, which side did you want, man?
I'm in the center. I'm not sure we're lowering the bar. I don't think that's the right terminology. I think that the staff would keep the same level of, I mean, the same kind of thing that we would do. So I'm not sure we're lowering the bar. Like, I don't think making it easier is necessarily lowering the bar. I think if we can make a process go easier and we can eliminate hours of time for staff, that might be something we should look at.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to get it. We're trying.
Government shouldn't be hard just because it's hard. If we don't need a, I mean, I understand, we have to have a notarized signature. But if we didn't, we should eliminate it. If we, if we have, have a piece of paper that we fill out that's unnecessary, we shouldn't fill it out. If we can affect that change here, and I'm not saying we should, I'm just, I'm just playing the other side.
I think we're just trying to do a different strategy to try and to get a different result. That's all I think we're trying to do here and we can reverse it, can't we?
Yeah, that's, that's how I feel too. It could be temporary. We could put a.
Put time restraints on it?
I don't, I don't know. Or we could bring it back to.
Well, first of all, we, 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 we don't, we, we, we can make a recommendation, the city council will have to, will have to be. Again, we're not a legislative body, so, so.
Wait, I don't believe we do. It says the planning commission may authorize members of the community development department. I don't think this goes before the city council.
We haven't, we haven't done it.
We haven't done it.
Yeah.
Oh, so this would be an addition. This, we would have to modify. So this is currently not in code?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I thought this is what it currently was.
It is. We know what it is. It is currently this way. We've just never gone down that path.
If we just said, from what I understand, sure, but let's say we figure that out. I believe if the planning commission could make a vote to authorize, you know, the community development department to approve whatever we decide. I don't think that goes to the city council. If we were going to make a change of a permitted use, that obviously would.
Well, it doesn't depend what it is. If we're talking about changing something in the zone, it would be the city council. If we just want to say, these folks in this area with this one specific thing, then it might.
It's kind of vague. It says grant or deny conditional use permit subject to limitations or qualifications as deemed necessary.
Perhaps it's a research item for Brian.
Yeah, but I believe that it's saying that we can subject who can approve these. And we can say it's only can be these people with this title and they have to have this degree or whatever we wanted to do, right?
Yeah, it sounds like.
We would put the qualification limitation on it, from what I understand. I'm not a lawyer, but.
That's what, yeah, seems to say, and I guess we'd probably have to get the attorney's office to be okay.
This is all very preliminary, right?
Yeah, preliminary. Hey, I have to say one thing. Staff is by no means complaining about the hours that it takes to do these reports. We're happy to do them, but it would save time. So just so you know that.
I, I just wanted to put my two cents into about the paving. I think that's a, that's a one-time deal and then it would go away. And so although it would be beneficial right now, I don't think that's something we consider as.
It, it frankly, it's, it's in that size, it would be, it would be very expensive.
Yeah.
That would be very expensive.
Which is why they haven't done it yet.
That's a good point. If it's a lot that existed for how long? Forty years?
Oh, they've been here for a long.
Okay, sixty years and now it's in disarray by having it paved, it will be in disarray again in ten years?
You know, I, I mean, depends.
I, I also have owned a business in a, in a crappy, um, business area and I paid less rent because of it and it helped me get started in the business.
Yeah.
So I don't think we, I, I don't necessarily think as a city, we need to make sure that every single property in Murray City has, you know, gold paved roads and perfectly flat surfaces.
Sure.
I mean, I would like it that way, but I don't, I don't think as, as if a conditional use comes in, I don't think we should or have the ability to say, you know, we want this particular thing just because we like it a lot. You know, we're not mitigating an impact by telling them that they need to have, you know, blue trim or something.
That's a really good point.
So Mr. Pearson, speak to that a little bit more because I'm on the fence too. I'm confused. I can see both arguments. So if our push to this change is to save time and get what we want at this property, we might not, what, what we want silly and we might not really get what we think we're getting. So it's not a strong argument?
I think, for me, I think the time savings is a valid argument. I think the paving thing, if we do it, we should try to get that. But I don't think we should consider that.
We'd be hoping for it to happen. We can't mandate it.
Yep.
If you go up and down forty eight hundred south in this general area, these type of units exist on both sides of the street. And there are some property owners that really take care of their property. And I would want this same thing for them as I would want for the ones that don't take good care of their property. Right? Because they're both trying to accomplish the same thing.
I think if we could articulate what we would want out of this, these property owners, and it was reasonable, then we should probably talk about how to put that in the city code instead of worrying about a conditional use permit.
Well, that's, that's, that's an interesting concept to establish, try to establish some standard is what you're talking about.
I, I really like that. I think that has a lot of weight. Like, how does it go back to what I was saying earlier? Can we say any zone can only have some percentage of this in it?
Yeah, I don't like that idea. But, and, and let me tell you why. I do not like when there is any type of industry where I can come in and own it and no one can compete with me.
I'm gonna say something self-incriminating.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
So this, some of the problem, think, because I'm just thinking about it all now as we're talking about it again and always come back around to this. Some of the problem with Garko is enabling on our, I'm picking on a specific property and I shouldn't. But some of the problems with properties like this that we're talking about is a little bit of enabling on our part in terms of staff and, and coding and the way it works. We don't have a code that keeps somebody from moving into a nine hundred square foot unit, very cheap, not very well maintained, and trying to sell cars out of it. And that drives, what, what that drives is the high turnover that happens over and over and over again. Six different people in two years will try to sell two cars at a time out of that unit. And all it does is keep putting money in the pockets of the property owners and disincentivize them from doing anything differently. We might get more bang for our buck in terms of making modifications to things by passing Phil's ordinance and saying, you got to have a certain size of lot to do car lots. Definitely will. When the time comes, it will be the Phil, the Phil Markham Memorial Ordinance change.
Describe it, because that's what I'm trying to get to.
That's probably better bang for our buck. Some of us aren't familiar with that, with that ordinance. Let's, uh, let's, let's share. There's been a long discussion. This is the part of the self-incriminating. There's a, there's been a long discussion amongst the planning commissioners about potentially saying, maybe the problem isn't car lots. Maybe the problem is really tiny car lots that never succeed and cause parking problems in other places. We should probably try to eliminate these really tiny car lots. So don't allow car lot sales, don't allow car sales out of multi-user facilities. You have your own property, you have your own property to take care of, et cetera. And that probably does more for the upkeep of Garko than anything else because it takes away that enabling incentive, maybe? I think that's a, I think that's a phenomenal idea. And I think that when you, if you, in a, if we can, if we could, if there's a, if we have a methodology to establish a standard, that's a reasonable standard, that's going to promote. You know, I, I'm not saying they need to be gold-plated, uh, you know, garage door openers or whatever, but, you know, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna promote an investment in the community. And it's, and, and it's going to, it's not going to, to, to just continually, continue this, this, this neg, what I view as a negative trend. That would be very interesting. And I think if we could do that, that would be, that would be a phenomenal thing to discuss.
I think it's a terrible idea. And let me tell you why. I really do not like ordinances that disincentivize people that are trying to get into a business, that they have to be rich to do it. And that's exactly what.
It, it would be a viable business for years and years and years to come because even if it turns over, if it's the same use, it's just a non-conforming use. So it's going to take years of not being able to backfill those spaces in with that business in a certain period of time.
Well, I understand, I understand. You're right about that and the use would stick with the property. I get that as long as they continue to put people in there. But why are we saying to people, hey, you, you want to go sell cars and start a car business? Too bad. You can't do it in Murray.
Well, can, is there a way we cannot?
Because we only let people that have lots of money, that can go get a standalone building to, to open a business, a car business? I don't like that.
Mr. Pearson, I support what you're saying. So I had the same concern, but I also like the idea of the Phil Zone, whatever we're gonna call it, Markham. I, I like both ideas. So is there a way that we can address both these? Like maybe say something like this size, it has to be the size with no stipulations. You could share it with two companies, businesses, like two guys could open the lot and have a car lot.
Isn't that what the, isn't that what the building we're talking about is? They all know, they're sharing the building.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, just in a different way.
This is though, th- this is not even a unique problem to Murray. This is a, car sales in multi-tenant facilities is a problem in every city I've ever worked in because they tend to bring cars in and they're like, well, they're not, they're very long. It's, you know, et cetera, et cetera. It's hard to accommodate them and everybody else that moves in as a tenant in those, in those spaces. There are some uses that just don't lend themselves well. There's certain, like, business infrastructures and car sales is one for those. Although that has changed a little bit with internet sales and consignment, et cetera. So, but these are just Garko, it's just really small. Yeah, I think, I think, I think the point is, it's, the, the, it's not an issue of, you have to, it's, it's, my, I, I guess where I'm coming from is, is it's, it's not, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that somebody has to own five acres in, in, to, to be able to do, to do, to do a, a, a car lot. But I think that, that we could probably, there's, I'm sure there's data out there that would tell us that at a certain square footage, you know, across, across the country and, and, and maybe there's even regional data, the percentage that are successful and the percentage that are not successful. And I think that, you know, the, the, the point that, 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 that's been made, and I think it's a valid point is, and I think, I think that Commissioner Nate made, I think Jared made it, the point is, you know, who's really winning at this point from these, these, these super small, um, facilities? That they go in, a, a, a dealership goes in their last three, four, five, six months, maybe a year. They don't, it doesn't work. They're, they're, they, I, they, it, if they, if they left and they go out of business, they didn't, the, the person who owned that business didn't win. They lost. That, that's why they're out of business.
But wasn't that their, wasn't that, that, that was their risk to take?
And then, and, but, but who's, but who, but who's, who's winning? And, and it's the property owner that's winning. And he's winning by, or he or she's winning in, in, you know, in the way that Commissioner Nate described it by, by kind of, you know, it's, it's the lowest common denominator. Um, and, you know, maybe that common denominator just needs to be a little higher. Um, and, and it, and it doesn't need to be, it doesn't need to be five acres, but maybe it need, but, but, you know, there, there, there's got to be data out there that we could, we could, we could address this from a, from a thoughtful and a data-driven perspective and say, look, if, if we know that, and I'm making up a number here, if we know that eighty percent of, 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 of new car lots fail if they are two thousand square feet or less in square footage. Okay, well, we don't want to, why, 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 why don't we just, why, why would we, why do we want to be a part of that? If at three thousand square feet, fifty percent of them, it's a coin flip. You know what I mean? Um, you know, if the odds are stacked against you, why don't, why, 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 why play the game?
But, but why, why?
Let's get, let's get the data.
Why should the city be the keeper, the keeper of what people want to do? I'll give you an example.
Be, be, because it's a community standard.
I've opened many businesses. I opened a business right across a fashion placement. It was a pet store. Pet stores, ninety percent of them fell. I took that risk. Now, as a city, should we say, you know what? Because ninety percent of pet stores fell and, you know, people don't like them because they, you know, what, for whatever reason, we should not allow them? I don't think so.
If, if, if they, if they're, if the, if it's a situation where the fire department has a, if the fire department consistently has, has an issue getting access to the property.
Well.
If there's, oh, if there's, if there, if there are vehicles that spill over to other, into other, into, into, into other spaces that are, that, and it, and it's over parked or under parked, I guess, if, if, and it, and if, and if it's a continual revolving door that, that is not, that, that, that is diminishing the, 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 the community, yeah, we should care. It's, it's an, that's, I mean, I, I, I wish I would have known that your business was there. I would have come and bought something from you. But, but the, but it's, that's, that's a, to me, it's, 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 if we, if we, if we know that this is, if, if we don't like the result we're getting, you know, to Commissioner Rich's point, if we don't like the result we're getting, I agree, I don't like the result we're getting. And I guess that my, my thought was, if we come in here and we look them in the eye, maybe that's better. Maybe, but, but you know what? Probably, sounds like there's probably a smarter way to handle it than that. Because I don't like the result we're getting.
But everything that you just mentioned, um, the parking and the fire department and everything, we should be resolving that outside of this. If, if there's really, if the fire department is really having an issue, then that needs to be resolved. We need to either figure out what they need to do. And we have the ability to put conditions on this. This is why it's conditional use. And so if we really can articulate what those things are, we can put conditions on these permits to fix those issues. And if we cannot, then we can deny the conditional use permit, but we, we would have to come up with what those are.
And that's why, those discussions, why I, I'm on the fence. I keep finding myself fall back to leave it as a conditional use permit because I feel a little bit uncomfortable with, we kept narrowing down a one specific job, one specific area, one specific company. And I think that's not our job to say, you're good, you're bad. We need to set up something that works for everyone. And that's why I feel like just keep it as a conditional use because we're only narrowing down on one specific area. That makes me feel uncomfortable.
So I guess what we, we didn't really intend for there to be a vote or anything like that tonight.
No, no, no.
So we're not really, we're not really asking for that, but it's helpful for us to kind of hear where, where we are on it. And I think that I have a kind of a sense for where we kind of are. Do you feel, it seems like I don't.
I, I, to me, it's split, but, um, I will say this, several years ago, um, we, the commission asked us to take a survey of other cities. For instance, like auto sales, how about half acre minimum parcel? So we, this goes, this has been fifteen, twenty years, it's been a long time. But we did survey other cities and it was all over the board. We could not come to any consensus. Now, that doesn't mean we couldn't try that again, um, and see if maybe could change, but to see if there's more of a consensus, but. You know, I guess, I don't know for sure where the commission wants to go with this.
I think data would be interesting personally.
I mean, am I wrong? Are we all wanting to discuss maybe making car sales not a conditional use anywhere in Murray?
Well, I'm subject to, subject, no, no, and, and, and I, and I would want to have significant.
Then that makes, then that's what makes me uncomfortable, is talking about taking away the conditional use in just this one specific property.
But it's not this one particular property.
It'd be an area, it'd be, it would have to be an area. We couldn't do it as a property.
I think we need to clarify though. I don't think we, we were talking about taking away the conditional use. Right? We were allowing the staff to do the conditional use. So they would still be able to put, put conditions on the property. It would just be them doing it, which they do already.
Well, it's still the same level of discomfort. We're only talking about one specific property. I don't know if that's fair.
Doing it temporarily.
Well, and, but I would, and I, I think, I, so I, I'll, I, I, I guess I've moved a little bit. I could be open to that, but with, but with, with, uh, you know, with, with changes to, to what, 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 what is the type of, the type of properties, the size. I don't even know what the size would be. I need information to be able to make that decision. I think that'd be very interesting.
Why don't, why don't we take that as the direction that we've got from the discussion tonight? That you would need more, as a commission, you need some more information about what its implications would be. And, and I think the point is, this, the most salient point really is, is really the first kind of couple that were made. That there needs to be a, a tangible benefit to somebody for doing it. We don't want to move, we want to change the, the way that we're doing it just to change. If it creates some kind of a benefit to the, to the people that are trying to lease these spaces, if it makes it easier for them to get into business, do their thing and we're out of the way, or not out of the way, but it's a little streamlined, even if it's saving them a couple of days of process or a week of process, something, we, we can get that kind of data. We can analyze what kind of time we're spending as staff on the reports. And like Susan said, you're not complaining about the reports at all. That's how you learn to, to do this. You write conditional use permit reports. Until you're so sick of conditional use permit reports, that you're begging someone to give you a zone change.
That's what it took.
Don't care how controversial it is. I'll do the zone change as long as I don't have to process a conditional use permit. We don't care. We'll do it. And we'll do the same legwork regardless all the time too. So let's find out what those benefits would really be. We'll try to put some numbers to it so it can make better sense. And in the, at the meantime, we'll be looking at data for, car lots are really kind of the car lots and contractors. We'll try to look at data for those kinds of uses and see, because maybe we're just way off the base for everything. And we'll just use this as a starting point and have that conversation. That work?
Yeah, I think the other thing I'd be interested in is it, would there be able to be a way, if we did implement something, you could put a time limit on it, you could, we could reel, yeah, like.
I, I'm guessing that the way you guys would use the, the, the language we're talking about tonight, it would be some kind of a resolution or something. We'll have to look at it with, with legal, but it would be some kind of resolution you would pass saying, we're going to resolve it. We're going to have the staff look at this for the next year and they'll handle the conditions.
Yeah, and we could reanalyze and see how that's going.
It could be sunsetted, absolutely. I don't think that would be a problem. I could be completely wrong, but I don't think it would be a problem.
All right. Well, we have no other items of business and there is no member of the public to talk, to offer any suggestions. And we've learned that we cannot talk about anything else to this point. So I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Um, it's eight fifteen PM.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we motion adjourn. Uh, leave a second. I'll, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.